Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held March 5th, 2019, at 6:00 PM at the Council Chambers Building. If you could please have the clerk take role.
Councilmember Altouse?
Here.
Councilmember Hulse?
Here.
Councilmember Howdige?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Here.
Mayor Olinsky?
Here, thanks. And please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Up next on the agenda is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Councilmembers, do we have anything to report tonight? No?
I had a couple of things. I don't know if any of the other councilmembers were going to report on them. Councilmember Altouse and I did attend the Seuss Tacular Fun Day at the Cottonwood Middle School last Thursday. It was a, I enjoyed it. There were crafts and reading and kids and it was, it was a really good time and celebrating National Reading Week and Dr. Seuss' birthday, which was, I believe, March 2nd. So it was a great event and a lot of volunteers were out there. Also, last, that was actually Wednesday, last Thursday was the quarterly intergovernmental meeting and councilmember Matthews, Mayor Olinsky, our city manager, Ron Corbett and myself attended, representing Cottonwood. There were several presentations. One of the more interesting for our community was an update as to what's going on at the hospital. I wasn't really in the loop as far as they're, they're putting quite a bit of money into upgrades and new building development outright at Verdi Valley Medical Center and kind of reorganizing some of their services there, which sound, which were really interesting and I think we'll have more updates as, as that project continues. And then also celebrating local business, five-year celebration for Paz on Main. The mayor, councilmember Matthews and myself were also there. Next month, we will have another multi-year celebration, nine years for Pillsbury here in Old Town. It's really great to have these well-established businesses in Old Town and it is something to celebrate. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Great, thank you. I don't have much to report. Just last week, I did attend on council's behalf the NACOG meeting, Northern Arizona Council Governments, last week, Thursday. I think of interest to us is the CDBG funding model. I know this council's been frustrated in the past about how we can only really choose one project, so they've heard us loud and clear. I don't know how far it'll go, but they are taking it into consideration. I think it's going to take another staff member down at the state to make any real changes for us in these smaller communities, but anyway, they have heard us for what it's worth. Do you have anything to report, Mr. Manager?
Mayor?
Mr. Manager.
Mister?
I've been called worse, a lot worse than I have. Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. I wanted to let the council and the community know that our chief of police, police is representing the city on the county's newly-formed Mental Health Coalition. I'm excited about that. Yavapai County is recognized in Arizona and throughout the country as a leader in the collaborative efforts to address mental illness and reduce recidivism. Excuse me. The Cottonwood Youth Center will be hosting Spring Break Day Camp next week, Monday through Friday, 7:30 AM to 6:00 PM. Costs $95 for the week and $22 for the day. Kids will have the chance to create spring-themed crafts, participate in all sorts of fun activities and take some field trips. Parks and Recreation's youth basketball ends this Saturday, March 9th, with the final games for the second and third graders at the Rec Center. Check it out on Verdi Valley TV for airing of the games. Our library, the Cottonwood Public Library, will be hosting the Arizona SciTech Festival on Wednesday, March 13th, from 3:00 to 5:00. Some activities include, oh, I should have asked Ryan to present this, Ozobot, I'm pronouncing that even close, Ozobot Camp, Lizards and Snakes, Breaker Space, 3D printer demo, a Rocket Wrecker and a whole lot more. Sounds like a real good time. The Cottonwood Airport Commission will be meeting tomorrow night, March 6th, at 6:00 here, and the agenda is online. During February 21st and 22nd, the following departments contributed to the successful navigation of the winter storm, so I just wanted to call out the departments. In the management report, you'll see the list of employees. I was very impressed with the way the city came together and kept our streets clear, responded to our outages of electricity. I appreciate APS's quick response in addressing the first outage and then getting the down, the Old Town outage out, but specifically, of course, our IT had to deal with some special outages. Some of our equipment went down as a result of the outage and they came in and worked on that. Of course, Public Works, Streets and Maintenance, Cottonwood Police, Communications, all, all of the, both the sworn and civilian staff, of course, Fire and Medical, special appreciation to the chiefs and coordinating with Yavapai County's emergency operations centers that they opened, working with them. Our Fire and Medical Shifts, B and C, our Utilities, Water and Wastewater, of course, they showed up at work on Thursday without even having to be asked and made things happen and I, and I just appreciate them immensely. And then a special thank you to Parks and Rec, keeping the Rec Center open so that people who had to work still had a place to bring their children while the schools were closed. So I'm just couldn't be proud of our staff, the way they came together and made sure that things kept going, so that's all.
Very good. Okay, well, thank you very much for that and we'll move on then to presentations. We have one presentation tonight for council and the public. It's from Jane Schwantes and I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly or close enough. You're here from, on behalf of Verdi Valley CASA, you're the president of Verdi Valley CASA Support Council and you will present information on the Oasis Garden for Children at Risk that is located at the Cottonwood Community School. So thanks for being here tonight. And how do you pronounce your last name?
Schwantes.
Okay, thanks.
First, I want to thank Vice Mayor Tosca Henry for giving me this opportunity and for you also, Mayor. So what, what is the Oasis Garden for Children? First of all, it's located, as you said, at the middle school, well, former middle school, now the Cottonwood Community School. And it is not just a garden of vegetables or flowers. It, we call it an Oasis Garden because it has five areas and in the five areas, we have four themes. One is an area to reflect, one is an area of exploration and it's a little library with, you know, an area for kids to read and sit there and have lunch or whatever, and an area for play, so we have some ground games there, and then an area we call Grow, which is the combination of our fruit trees and a garden area for them to grow vegetables. On February 16th, we had the grand opening or open house or dedication ceremony, whatever you want to call it, and maybe you saw it in the newspaper and wondered what it was about, so I'll give you more information. So why did we decide to make this Oasis Garden for Children? The mission of the Verdi Valley CASA Support Council is to give children in foster care the same opportunities and experiences as other children in the community. And so the key word for me in our mission statement is opportunity or experience and certainly, most of what we do is we find out a kid in foster care, child in foster care needs a new pair of shoes, or they want to be involved in, you know, soccer or they need funding for that. And so we basically hand out money. And I said, you know, as the president, I want to just take it a little bit further. We don't want to just have kids, you know, being on the receiving end and always, you know, gaining that victim mentality of, oh, poor me, hand me something and help me that way. And so with this garden, we thought if, you know, all of us need a place where we can reflect, sit and reflect, and a place where we can explore and, you know, just learn new things and discover and a place where we can play and get away and a place for, to help us to grow with, you know, good food also and, but just a place where we can see things grow or we can, with our hands, build something. And so that was the whole purpose behind wanting to make a garden like that. We see kids every day, they're just in a frenzy because they're either on their social media screen, you know, their screens, getting involved in social media and they, you know, many of our kids in our community have terrible home lives and so just find a peaceful place for them to go. And, but more so, it's a place for kids to interact with adults. And CASAs have said to us, we, where can we take children? Where can we take the children that we are taking care of? Or where can a parent meet their child, you know, have meeting times with their parents when they have visitation times? And they're, they just don't really know where to go, so they take them to McDonald's and watch them play instead of playing with them. And so this garden is meant to be where they can go and, and interact with them. And when, at our opening, one of the women, she's in her 60s, and she said, "Oh, I used to play hopscotch," and she started playing hopscotch with her sister who was also in her 60s. And it was just fun for them to do something silly like that and so, but then I wanted to say, how did we even come into existence? How did this idea come up? Well, I had spoken with Steve King, the superintendent, and for the last couple of years, I've kind of done some ad hoc garden classes with some of the kids. And I saw, you know, thought of the opportunity of the Arizona Community Foundation grant and so with the help of a woman who is a grant writer, she helped me write for a grant to get all the seed money to start it. And it wasn't very much considering the huge area that Steve King gave me at the school and so, and then with Matt Schumacher, the principal, he said, "I just like saying yes, Jane, so just anything you want, just ask me because I like saying yes." And I said, "I sure love having people say yes to me," you know? So he gave us the freedom to create and, and it was really fun because even though I kept thinking, "Oh, this is taking so long," every day, teachers or kids would come out and, and watch us and it, it was just so exciting because they would, they would tell a teacher, "Oh, well, well, doesn't she need to do this?" And then the next day, they would see that I did it, or, you know, just all the excitement of them watching it grow, which is part of the whole, you know, point behind it, which it was something to me because I was expecting, okay, let's build it and then the kids come, instead of, wow, they're watching us, and that was part of their experience of watching it grow. So now we have the infrastructure all in place and thanks to great volunteers like Mary Ann, who's a master gardener. Mary Ann and two of her co-master gardeners, I guess is what they're called, they're going to teach some classes at the garden. And so now that we have the infrastructure and we have some people who want to volunteer and help, we just need to have, you know, continued, we're going to always have continued funding needs and, but we also want to have some added things. We just have basic things right now, so as the summer comes upon us, we have some shade trees, but by 10 o'clock, the shade is not there anymore and so we want to put a couple of pergolas and a few more benches and right now, the, most of the area is dried, dead Bermuda grass and so we want some way to cover over that so the kids can walk and not get stickers on their legs as they're jumping around. We also want a few nice things like a sundial, things that kids could learn, but I want it to continue to look like it's all handmade. I don't want a bunch of industrial things put in there. I want it to have that peaceful feeling of handmade. And so as we, you know, continue with this, I, the whole vision is for kids in foster care or kids at risk, but I want it to be a joint effort with other organizations that work with children, like the Verdi Sanctuary, even though it's a place for domestic victims, there's a lot of children there and they need a place like this to go. And the Manzanita Outreach and Kids at Hope, we all have the same, you know, heart of helping children. We just have different areas we focus on and, but this garden can be a place for kids to all come together. And so in the future, you know, we plan on applying for grants and we've had many generous people donate and we are a tax-deductible organization and, but all those sources are unpredictable. You know, you can write a grant and you don't know if you'll receive it or not. And so we wanted to partner with the community and because we want to be able to say we have sustainable resources and refunding. At the open house, Vice Mayor Henry and Superintendent Steve King talked about, when we were talking about the area of planting trees and the garden, that, you know, some things take a long time, like the trees will take three to five years before we bear fruit and that, and some things bear fruit within a few months, like the vegetables we're going to plant. And, but all of this is, you know, for now and for the future and so we would like to see this grow and become a part of the community and for all the children who are at risk in our community. So, thank you for letting me address you and if you have any questions, I was trying to make it kind of vague, but so that you can ask me anything specific.
Do you have any questions for Ms. Schwantes?
Well, I, I had a question and a comment. First, thank you for being here tonight and giving us more information. This project has been several years in the making, but the first I'd heard about it was when a mutual, a friend had reached out and given some information about that, so I wanted to make sure that there was public awareness. It's right in the middle, you know, it's right at the middle school. It's a really neat little oasis for, for kids, for families, for the public, anybody to stop by there. But the question is, so if, if there are people that would like more information, I see you've got a basket of flyers and other information there, but is there a website or a phone number, email, et cetera, other contact information?
On both of the brochures, our, our website is very long. It's verdivallycasa-supportcouncil.org and we, it's not up to date as of February, but it gives you all the information that we have about the garden. There's two numbers on the Oasis Garden brochure is my number and on the CASA brochure, it's a, our treasurer's number, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks for coming in this evening, we appreciate it. And want to let you know too, that the city council puts money aside for a grant program here in the building, building community grant program, so we get a handful of applicants every year and I would encourage you to apply for that, for funding.
Absolutely, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And if anyone wants to look through our little scrapbook and see from the beginning to now, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, and we limit comments to a five-minute time period. So there are yellow slips in the back. If you'd like to address the council, you're more than welcome to. We have Hunter Bachrock here this evening to address us. Thanks for coming out. Thanks for coming out this evening.
Thank you for listening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'd like to bring attention to a problem that's continued for a number of years in Old Town and with the recent success has only gotten worse and that's speed enforcement on Main Street. I own the property next to, west of Hogwild Barbecue. It's a 1929 Sears Roebuck House that was on the home tour last year and I would invite anybody to pull into my driveway and sit for a little while and watch the cars coming west. The problem starts back at about Camelot, where they're jockeying for position, where it goes from two lanes to one lane. So everybody speeds up and they're doing about 40 when they come down through there and about three years ago, I wrote a letter to the chief of police. The police started some enforcement and then that evaporated again, so just today, I was down there just watching traffic whiz by and the people doing 25 are the exception. And there are two speed limit signs that are about that big, let's say 25. And I would like to propose that you would consider a radar sign like they have going into Cornville. I've been reading up on those. Apparently, the, they estimate 80% of the people that see them react to them, so that's, that's pretty substantial. Or I did contact the town yard and I was informed that they do the bare minimum that the state requires and I thought we could maybe do better than the bare minimum, especially with the more traffic that, you know, because of the success. So just past Hogwild is my property and anyone's welcome to pull in there and just watch traffic for about 10 minutes and you'll see what I see all, all day, every day. And rush hours are particularly busy, but as I've said, the people doing 25 are the exception, not the rule. So I would ask you to consider a little more aggressive signage and perhaps some enforcement.
Okay. Thanks for coming in this evening.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Good to see you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure what I'm allowed to say here, but I just want to update the council that we have a couple of things going on in that area. One is the road diet that will move that merging back further towards that way, 260 up, up towards Walgreens. And then we, the, the police department is looking at some grants for some additional of those electronic monitoring signs, so we are working on it.
Great, very good. Thank you for that information. Anyone else here tonight that would like to address the council? Okay, then we move into approval of the minutes of the work session of February 12th, 2019.
I do.
Go ahead.
I did send it to Mary Ann. You have that on there for the two owner, before Carrie on page three of the second paragraph. Two times I mentioned Carrie before should be owner.
So move to approve the minutes with councilmember Matthews' changes.
All right, I'll second that. So councilmember Altouse made the motion, mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Then we go into unfinished business, just one item tonight, ordinance number 660, amending Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses and Regulations of the Cottonwood Municipal Code by deleting Chapter 5.17, Mobile Food Vendors in its entirety and adding a new chapter, 5.17, Mobile Food Vendors, second and final reading.
Mayor, council, since the first hearing, there was no phone calls or objections to the ordinance, therefore there are no changes.
Okay. Very good. Gone over this many, many times. I don't think we have any questions for staff? No? Anyone in the audience have any questions for staff on this? No? All right.
I move to approve ordinance number 660.
Second.
Okay, vice mayor made the motion, councilmember Matthews seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Altouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Howdige?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes. Motion is approved. Could we please read ordinance number 660 by title only?
Ordinance number 660, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses and Regulations of the Cottonwood Municipal Code by deleting Chapter 5.17, Mobile Food Vendors in its entirety and adding a new chapter, 5.17, Mobile Vendors. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Okay, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence. So we have five items tonight and I'll read them out for everyone. Item one is consideration of closing Main Street from 10th Street to Cactus Street on April 13th, 2019, for the Brian Mickelson Marathon. Second item, approval and authorization to submit special use event permit applications for the Brian Mickelson Marathon to the Town of Clarkdale, Arizona State Parks and National Park Service. Item three is resolution number 2987, acceptance of a water line access and maintenance easement from Linda Mickelson. Item four, award of contract to Pinnacle Data Systems for utility bill printing and mailing services. Item five is consideration of a sole source purchasing exemption to utilize Alliance Service and Control Specialists for Programming, Integration and Installation of Industrial Control Hardware and Software for the Mingus and Riverfront Wastewater Reclamation SCADA System. Are there any items that councilmember would like to have pooled?
Yes, Mayor, item five, please.
Okay. Any items a member of the public would like to have pooled? Okay, let's go ahead and take item five then before we approve the others. That is consideration of a sole source purchasing exemption to utilize Alliance Service and Control Specialists for Programming, Integration, blah, blah, blah. How are you, Mr. Biggs?
I understand.
Not going to read it twice.
Good evening. Tonight, I ask the council approve a sole source purchasing exemption for Alliance Service and Control Specialists. I've been with the city 13 years. Alliance was on board with us when I started. They provide systems integration, programming, hardware, software updates. The utilities in the city are not run on manual, everything's automatic. Pumps turn on and off, boom, it turns on and off. All this is controlled by dozens of tiny little computers. All these computers need to talk to each other. In this technology, there are very limited number of vendors that provide the hardware and there's even fewer numbers of vendors that provide the software that make all these computers talk to each other. And it's, it's levels, it's, it's different layers of software talking to software and talking to software. The, the computer screen that I see is about number six in line from the, the piece of equipment that's actually being operated. Alliance has provided this service to the city, like I said, for more than 13 years on the wastewater side. They came along with us for the water about 10 years ago, around the time we acquired the water companies. Alliance set up the original and still the, the existing SCADA system that ties all our wells together that I can look at on the computer screen and shows me pressures and flows and reservoir levels. In this technology, the, the problem is once you start with a vendor and their products and their experience, you're pretty well, I don't want to say locked in, but if, if you go to other vendors, they don't have the same experience, they don't have the same abilities. This company's been on board with us so long that they not only know city staff, they know the vendors that the city works with. So when we have a problem, we can call Alliance, they can get on the phone with our vendor 24/7 and solve the problem remotely. Like I said, it's layers of software talking to other layers of software. And so that's why I'm asking for council's approval of this sole source tonight. I, I don't want to make it sound like this is the only company capable of doing this. About six or eight years ago, we went out for a bid, talked to other companies. What we found in this case was their response time is not what we needed, their experience was not what we needed. I, I don't want to go back out and reinvent the wheel. They've been with us a long time. When I have a problem, I need somebody that I can get on the phone, they can get on the phone to somebody else, they can get back to us, the problem gets solved. This particular dock in front of you is, is for wastewater services, but there's a mirror side to this, that's the water side. This technology also controls the arsenic treatment systems and so when I lose one of those, I lose the well. When I lose the well, then I have to bring online other resources to take that place. So they provide a very critical service to the utility department. Anyway, questions, comments? Questions?
So comment, as I, as you and I discussed, the reason I'd ask for this, I didn't be pooled, is this seems to be, at least in my opinion, from what I understood of the packet materials, to be rather a close call as to why we wouldn't just go out for competitive, a competitive bid process, especially where, you know, we've had this same vendor for so many years, these aren't emergent services that are provided. And so that's why I'd ask for additional information and explanation as to why they are specifically tailored or, you know, why this company really meets our needs and, and we should bypass that competitive bid process. It sounds as though you're, you're convinced that...
Did I answer your questions?
I still think it's a close call.
Okay.
But that's probably because I don't have your same in-depth understanding of how our, our water and wastewater systems...
I scratched my head a lot, trust me.
But, you know, wherever possible, I do prefer to err on the side of, let's, let's be competitive, let's follow our competitive bid process, but again, I do understand what you're saying with their experience with the system, but just...
It paid off recently, within the past couple of months. We had some circuit boards that blew up, these little boxes blew up, they quit talking to each other and for about a week's time, we were running things manually that should have been run automatically. That incurred a great deal of staff time because now, instead of computers being online, you know, when, when staff's not there, I've, I had staff there 24 hours... being online, you know, when staff's not there, I've, I had staff there 24 hours a day for a lot of weeks straight. That's a lot of overtime, and I really don't have the staff to take care of that load. It's exhausting, you know. And basically, all they had to do was stand up and punch a button every few hours. But they're there. They're sleeping in their car in the parking lot at the facility. And we got Alliance involved. They got hold of the vendor that made the parts. They ran checks to realize that not only was it this part, it was the parts behind it that were also bad. They found those for us, not, not from their vendor, but from another vendor. They brought them up. They installed them. They tested everything. They installed new software. And from the point that we contacted them, it was seamless. But before we did, we were in real trouble. And all this happens, just, it's not that unusual. This is old technology, and it's hard to find parts.
And so you don't feel that it would be seamless with another company?
No, we do not. Eventually, it would. Yeah, eventually, we would reach the same level of trust and reliance that we have with these people. But it would take us a long time to get there, and it would be a very painful process. It would be like dancing with a partner, but your steps just don't match. So there's going to be a lot of pain involved.
Well, I'm a bad dancer, but I think I do appreciate the extra information. It does help me see that, you know, we do seem to, you know, kind of lean toward meeting the requirement for the exception. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. Thanks for the clarification. I agree with the Vice Mayor that I'd like to be as competitive as possible and not, just to make sure we have a level playing field, but it.
I can work with Mr. Cook here. We can set something up and.
If we were talking about a larger amount of money, I think I'd, I bet this council would probably agree with that. But I think it's, I agree with your line of reasoning.
I do, too.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I'm curious.
Yes.
If the equipment is outdated, are we doing anything to update to get to the, to the new equipment?
Yes.
From the company?
Yes, we are. And the Riverfront plant had a lot to do with us forcing us to update equipment up at the Mingus plant. These two plants need to talk to each other. So I've got new equipment down here, and I've got 30-year-old equipment up there. It's running literally Windows XP.
Hmm.
And there's no, there's no support. There's security issues. And all of this, it's not online. It's, it's a separate system because of, for security reasons. But we have control and alarm systems and telephones that, I mean, it calls you in the middle of the night automatically, things like this. So, but yes, we're upgrading equipment.
Okay, so you're in the process of bringing everything up to today's standards?
Yes, and it's going to be a long, expensive process.
I understand that. I just want to make sure we're not just continuing along without needed equipment.
I've got equipment that's older than some of the people running it, so.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hulse, if I could add, we're bringing back your strategic plan at the next meeting on Tuesday. It is actually one of the line items in there. It's that important, is to modernize and update the Mingus wastewater treatment plant. And this is part of that. We understand it's a priority. A little bit of a funding issue, a little bit of a technology issue in making it all happen, but it is on staff's forefront on, on the work that we're doing with wastewater treatment.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are you ready for a motion?
Yes, please.
I move to approve the staff request to waive the city's purchasing policy to utilize Alliance service and control specialists on a sole source basis for programming, integration, support, and installation of the control technologies for the utility department as presented.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Hulse seconded it. Could I have a roll call vote on this, please?
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Haudeke?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Linsky?
Yes. Okay, then jumping back to the other four items on the consent agenda, I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items one through four.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I believe we have approved the consent agenda. And if we could have the clerk read Resolution Number 2987 by title only?
Resolution Number 2987, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of an easement for the construction, improvement, operation, and maintenance of a public utility, together with the right to authorize, permit, and license the use thereof. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, no new business tonight, so we roll right into claims and adjustments.
Move to pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Althouse seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Althouse made the motion. Matthews seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn. Thank you very much.